Okay, it is six o'clock and we call this meeting to order. Para traducción en español en vivo pueden escanear el código localizado en la última página de la agenda. Vice Mayor.
And remain standing, thank you.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Let's pray. Father God, we're just want to take a moment and thank you for this opportunity tonight. Lord, we thank you for this great city of Riverbank. Lord, I thank you for our mayor and our city council and our city staff that's with us tonight. And Lord, I love the fact that, Lord, we get to gather in this city council and it's a place where we get to celebrate our community and a place where we get to discuss business and share our concerns and our ideas. And I just pray for, and I want to thank you for the unity that's in the room tonight, the excitement for change and moving forward and all that you have in store for us in this year of 2025. Lord, I pray that God, as we may have different ideas, that God at the end of the day were able to come together and do our part together to move forward and make Riverbank the best city to live in in Stanislaus County. Thank you in Jesus' name, amen.
Roll call. Councilmember Ribe.
Here.
Councilmember Pimentel.
Here.
Councilmember Call.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fossey. Mayor Hernandez.
Here. For agenda changes, we will be pulling item 9.6 on the consent calendar and discussing it at a future meeting on March 11th. But if you're here to comment on the Verizon Wireless Cell Tower install at Castleburg Park, you will be allowed to make public comment when we get to that item at the consent calendar. Are there any other agenda changes? Okay, so conflicts of interest, any council authority member of staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. Seeing none, we're going to move on to presentation. So if I could invite the Cardozo Middle School Girl Basketball Team to the front. Okay. Could I have the coaches come over here to this side? No, please. Yes, please. So we are super excited to recognize you and your accomplishment for this season. And we have a certificate of recognition for you presented to the Cardozo Girls Basketball Team. Mid Valley Athletics League Girls Basketball Championship. In recognition of your exceptional teamwork, dedication, outstanding sportsmanship through the season, your collective efforts, commitment, and perseverance have brought great pride to the team, school, and community, and our council as a whole. Your hard work both on and off the court has exemplified the true spirit of competition and unity. Congratulations, and we're super proud of you. It was 14-0, right? And defeated this season, and we are super excited for you. This is for you, and we also have individual certificates for each of the team members. Would you like to say anything?
First of all, thank you so much for having us tonight. We really appreciate it. The girls did an amazing job this season. We want to thank all the parents for their support, especially Riverbank getting behind us and the school district, even our A.D., Luis Solario, kind of getting me in there coaching. I've coached Riverbank for a long time at the high school, but I thought this was going to be really neat coaching the girls here. And like I said, they did a tremendous job. And again, we want to thank you, Mayor Rachel, for having us here. I know, again, I can't repeat myself, but the girls really do appreciate it. And they did a tremendous job working hard and representing our city and our community, which we really appreciate.
So we'd love to take photos with you, and the council's going to come join us here.
Three rows. Four in front. Thank you.
Great. So we're starting off strong. So item 7.2, presentation for the Riverbank Recycled Water Project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Neil Colwell with KSN. Will be providing a update regarding the Riverbank Regional Recycled Water Project. This is a project that the City of Riverbank has been working on for quite some time. So we wanted to be sure to provide you with the latest information that we have, as well as a refresher for some of our newer council members to hear this information.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Neil Colwell, Kelson Sinack Newdeck, and I'm your program manager for the recycled water program. So pleased this evening here to provide you an update. Turn it on first. Pleased to provide you a presentation and update of the project, both to certainly council members have been on the council, they've seen some of this information before, other newer council members to kind of bring you up to speed with the history of this project, some of the background of the facilities as well. So want to go through that history, go through where we are in terms of the project development at this point. Talk a little bit about the outcomes of the 30% design and where the, what the status is of the 60% design that's ongoing right now. Go over the financial assistance applications and the status of those documents, and then the timeframe for completion of those. We do have some action items that will be coming back to the council here in the next several months. So touch on those, that you have an idea of some of the decision points that you'll have coming to you here near term, and then do an overview of where the schedule is for the remainder of the program. So to start off with some background on your wastewater facility. So not sure how much some of the council may know of the existing infrastructure you have that takes care of wastewater treatment and disposal. But this image here is an aerial image of your existing facilities. And these facilities, and so is the ponds you see here that labeled T1 through P9, they've largely been in existence in very similar format to this since, I think, before the 60s. This type of treatment method, which you see primarily in ponds T1 and T2, is an effective, low-cost, high-cost efficient way to treat wastewater. And the city's been taking benefit of that certainly for over the decades of use of these facilities. The wastewater comes in from, is collected within the city, comes across a trestle. A trestle, I can't see it on here, crosses the river right next to, or through the middle of Jacob Myers Park, and comes into the influent structure, which is a set of screening. Thank you. There we go, big arrow. So here's the trestle, comes across the river right here and comes into the headworks, to the facilities. From here, then, the wastewater goes into ponds T1 and T2, where it's where the primary elements of the treatment occurs, goes on into ponds T4 and P2, where there's some additional polishing going on. And then from there, it's distributed by your operations staff to the disposal ponds. And those will consist of anything from P3 to P9. That disposal method is what we call a percolation disposal. And so primarily, you're disposing of the water through it evaporating and percolating into the ground. And it's a very common method used throughout the Central Valley of California. Again, a very low cost, a cost-efficient way to manage wastewater. This overall facility has a capacity for about 1.8 million gallons per day of flow into it on the average basis. Right now, your flows are around 1.5, 1.6 million gallons per day. So there's a little bit of additional capacity available in those existing facilities. So moving on to some of the objectives for the recycled water program and the drivers and purpose for the program. Really, there's three primary drivers or three primary objectives. The first one is capacity. As I mentioned, your existing facilities have a capacity of about 1.8 million gallons per day. When we do a projection of your wastewater flows over a 20-year basis, we're anticipating that those flows are going to get up to about 2.3 million gallons per day. So there's a need to expand facilities to get additional capacity to serve the development that you already have planned within your existing general plan area. So this project provides for the additional capacity, provides for the treatment for that additional capacity, as well as the disposal method. And in this case, the disposal method is provided through recycled water use. So this project would continue to use the percolation ponds that you have. They provide, will continue to provide benefit, but it expands the disposal method by integrating recycled water use into the program. The second item is water quality. There's two primary benefits to the project from water quality perspective. One is by taking those very fairly simple to operate treatment ponds. They do a good job with certain constituents, but one area that they have trouble with is removing some nutrients. So nitrogen, for example, they don't do a real good job with that. There's some changes in the regional policies that have come through from the Regional Water Quality Control Board through their document called the Basin Plan that requires certain levels of nitrogen and maintaining certain levels of nitrogen in the underlying groundwater. And so this project brings in a treatment process that will provide for removal of nitrogen and be able to benefit from water quality perspective in that way. The second thing is with integrating recycled water use, where you're taking the water and having beneficial use over a much wider area, it removes low, it removes use on the percolation ponds. And so that's a benefit for the operation of those ponds themselves, as well as spreading the water over a wider area, providing for additional uptake of nutrients, as well as uptake of things like salts. And so there's some water quality benefits to the project overall. Then last one is a groundwater benefit, groundwater basin benefit. The program has, starts off with two primary agricultural users that kind of flank the wastewater treatment plant on the east and the west sides. Those two users have, or potential users have enough acreage to take all the wastewater regenerated from this facility. And what they would be doing is using the recycled water in lieu of pumping groundwater. Those users have existing wells, and so they pull groundwater out for the irrigation of the agricultural crops there. And so they would use this water in lieu of that groundwater that then leaves the groundwater available for, within the basin. And we see there's an interconnect between the Eastern San Juanquin Basin and the basin that underlies the city, the city proper here. So that will provide a benefit long-term to groundwater availability. I want to go through just a little bit of a history of some of the actions that were taken before. Again, for some of the newer council members, you can kind of see the history here of this program. I started up in 2021, but really, some of the initial concepts and ideas were coming together around 2015, 2016 timeframe. I believe it was 2017 when the city made an application to the State Water Board for grant funding for feasibility study. That grant was awarded, it paid for 50% of a feasibility study to evaluate the potential for developing recycled water for the city's facilities. That set of projects or set of studies was presented to the council. There are several workshops that we had with the council, presented those documents in draft form, received comments, and then finalized those in September 2021 and provided those to the State Water Board, where they accepted those under the grant funding program. That then led to some additional work in 2022, including development of 15% design. So taking the concepts that were in the feasibility study and putting them into initial drawings, a little bit more concrete in terms of the engineering analysis there. The 15% preliminary designs then supported some additional effort, including the environmental document preparation, updated construction costs based on that. And then that information then supported the financial analysis that resulted in the city updating its sewer charge in December 2022. So those documents were prepared, CEQA documents certified in December 2022. The rate study adopted in December 2022 as well. All of that work then also supported the applications for financial assistance. So in December, there were two applications submitted for financial assistance. One was to the State Water Resources Control Board for both low-interest loan and grant funding. And then also an application to the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA under a program that they call their BRIC Grant Program. It's building resilient infrastructure in communities. That particular program, we tied the project benefit into, from a groundwater supply perspective, into their funding criteria. So moving on into 2023, through a request for proposals process, the city selected Brown and Colwell as the design engineer. So they were contracted to prepare the 30% design, and so that has been completed. Those were completed in April 2024. Then that allowed the city to look at kind of some next steps and then moved forward with a contract being presented to the council in September for Brown and Colwell taking the 60% design forward. And that's where we are right now. They're working on that 60% design. And again, you can see the 15%, 30%, 60%. This is a very large program. And so we're taking steps in defining the project, in refining the project, having opportunities like this to be able to have discussions with council as the project develops as well. Right now, as of December, and kind of from December to now, based on the design, the advancement of the design, some minor alignments were changed. So we have an addendum to the CEQA document being prepared. And so we anticipate that being done here in the next several weeks. And we've continued through that timeframe to work with FEMA, actually through CalOES is who we're working with directly for the FEMA application, and then with the State Water Board on the additional funding applications. So to briefly go over the outcomes of the 30% design, the design concepts in the 15% level were advanced to the 30% level. Brown and Colwell had a complete topographic survey done of all the areas that were encompassed within the project footprint. Geotechnical soils investigations were concluded as part of that effort. And through their analysis, an additional process element was brought forward to remove grit as part of the treatment process. It improves the overall efficiency and longevity of the rest of the processes there. So that was brought in as a recommended treatment process for the overall program. And then Brown and Colwell reevaluated some of the other treatment processes to look at them from a cost efficiency and effectiveness perspective, including the tertiary filters, the approach to dewatering biosolids. And biosolids is a byproduct of the treatment process that you have to go through a dewatering process for that to be either beneficially used or disposed of. And then looked at the cost efficiencies of either rectangular or circular storage. And we're still going back and forth a little bit on that and what's the best approach. And then advanced the operational building elements from an architectural perspective, working with your staff to make sure that there's an adequate space for your operations maintenance staff to be able to operate and maintain this facility. And at that time, 30% design, the project cost was updated. At this point, we're using kind of a midpoint cost of about $124 million for construction on the project. So that's what's been used as the performa moving forward with the applications we have right now with the State Water Board. This image here, it just gives you a brief snapshot. If you kind of go back to the, visualize the treatment plant, the two rectangles, you kind of see the rectangles. One is the... Is this rectangle right here. This is what was previously pond T1, treatment pond. And then this space in here, this is where most of the treatment facilities are going in. The biological process here, it's called an oxidation ditch treatment process clarifiers. This is going into the pond T2 area. And then we have the recycled water components over here and some sludge drying and dewatering improvements going into what right now is pond T3. So those are right now, those are ponds, they're kind of holes in the ground that we're filling with facilities. So taking advantage of the fact that we don't have to do as much excavation in them to build this infrastructure. So at this point, taking the 60% design forward, the drawings are being advanced to 60% level. That includes the process components, more details, showing where the piping is going to go, the valves and those details. The structural and electrical elements are being advanced so that the structural engineers are looking at the structural components of the processes, electrical design, including the electrical power and instrumentation that goes into this. Still advancing the architectural design, refining that with additional input from your staff as well. And then one of the things that Brown and Colwell recommended is that the city consider pre-selection of some of the primary process components. The reason to do that is really twofold. One is to provide for an efficiency of design. So as a public entity, your contracts have to provide for alternative equipment. So if we go in with the pump brand X, we have to say pump brand X or equal. Some of these treatment processes are very different. And the way you design around one treatment process versus another can be very different. So they recommended going through a pre-selection process here. I'll go through what that is here in a moment. Continue to update the project costs at this point, and we anticipate that this effort will be done by July here in 2025. So when touch on the status of permitting, again, presented to previous councils here, this ongoing process. And we have several documents that go into either the State Water Sources Control Board or the Regional Water Quality Control Board. At this point, the Title 22 Engineering Report has been drafted. That's in the hands of your staff right now. We'll be completing that here in the next couple of weeks. That will go to the Division of Drinking Water, the State Water Board for review, and they'll approve that. Title 22 Engineering Report deals with recycled water, so it's an important element of assuring that the design meets the requirements of the regulatory criteria. And then the additional documents, the notice of intent, the reported waste discharge, those are permitting documents that relate to permitting of the recycled water use or permitting of the wastewater treatment operations. And so those are both largely drafted at this point. We'll be getting those to your staff here for them to review in the next couple of weeks. And all of that, we're targeting having these documents into Division Drinking Water and the Regional Board by March this year so that we're meeting certain deadlines that State Water Board wants to see the city move forward on. Second to last here is recycled water agreements. We've been working with your legal council to develop a template for that, so that those templates have been developed. They will take those forward, and those will be agreements, of course, that come back to City Council for approval. And lastly, which is very good, we continue to have very interested growers and users. And so we have firm letters of commitment from growers. That's something that the State Water Board wanted to see in terms of the funding applications. So we have those in hand, and they continue to have very high interest in this project, both to benefit them as well as benefit the city as well. Now, touching on one of the applications here, this is the FEMA grant application. So we applied in December 2022, applied for $50 million grant. That has moved forward very slowly. It's still in process. You can see the items 1 through 6, the various questions that have come back through to us that we've been answering detailed questions. The review process has gone through the technical review. So we passed through the technical review, and at this point, the only question that remained came through in December was just some clarification on some environmental elements. So we don't have anything firm from FEMA at this point in terms of approval, but we're still hopeful that we'll have some positive response here from FEMA. So that decision is still pending. So the State Water Board, this is where the city's had some very good success in this application process. We submitted the initial application in December 2022. That was for the 2023, 2024 funding period. During that period, the State Water Board had limited funds, and the city's project was below the funding list. And so we had to wait. We had good news when it came through to the 24, 25 funding period, where the State Water Board identified the city's program for initially a $50 million low-interest loan. And then a $3 million grant under the Water Recycling Funding Program. So initially, $53 million available there. As we've worked with the State Water Board, changes in the applicants and what the applicants across the state are asking for allowed for an additional $35.3 million of low-interest loan to become available for the city. So right now, you have the potential to be successful with an $88.3 million loan/grant combination. And so we're continuing to work with the State Water Board at this point to complete the application for that funding. And our timeframe here is to have everything completed to them by the end of March so that they can then move forward with drafting an agreement. That would be, again, an agreement that would come back to council for review and approval. Additional financing assistance, again, to prior presentations, somebody that have been on the council, you see these are similar slides from before. We still have some other financial assistance options that are still on the wings that we want to keep active in case there's some variability in what becomes ultimately available from the two programs that I just spoke about. One is through the EPA. They have a loan program, it's called the WIFIA Water Infrastructure Finance Innovation Act Loan Program. We've prepared a letter of interest, a letter of interest that included a 40-year financial performa to show the city's ability to accommodate the project financially. We had a consultation with EPA, and their recommendation was for the city to hold off submitting that formally until the FEMA and the State Water Board decisions come forward. And then if, depending on decisions there, then that may be something that you move forward with as we actually submit that LOI.
Do we expect to see the terms at that point if we were to submit the letter of intent? Or would that be later down the road? Say we're not successful with the BRIC grant, we go for this. Is that the point? We would see the actual terms?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Yeah. Again, other potential sources that we've mentioned, mostly from a financing perspective, if these other sources were not successful or didn't have favorable terms, the city could look at the Calforne Infrastructure Bank, could look at conventional loans, unlikely there. Or you could even look at some bond financing. Seems like the project scale could possibly go that way. But really, your financial consultant that's helping us with this really sees that the low-interest loan basis is really maximizing that's going to be the best, you know, the best approach. And certainly, we're looking for as much grant funding as we can, we can find here. So that's where we are in terms of the financial assistance items that are being considered. Bureau Reclamation is one that mentioned before. Until there's a decision on FEMA, since that's additional federal money, we wouldn't be looking at Bureau Reclamation. If FEMA dropped off, then there's potential to look at the Bureau Reclamation and some funding programs that they... If, if FEMA dropped off, then there's potential to look at the Bureau of Reclamation and some funding, funding programs that they. Okay. So some items here are going to come up for, for you for consideration. We're looking at, this is probably going to be April or May timeframe is we're going to have three different process equipment pre selections that, that we want to go through an RFP process, competitive process for, for pricing. And then bring those forward to, to the council for consideration. And, and this would include what's called the, the submittal preparation process for these. And so you would have terms of the supply agreement developed, costing of the equipment developed. And then the commitment financially initially would be just for the submittal, the design element of, of these. And so you can see here, this is the estimated range of what those, those potential financial commitments may be initially from these, these RFPs. So roughly on the order of around two hundred thousand dollars coming to the council for consideration in April or May.
Those, those costs, are those going to qualify for like those reimbursements as well? Or do, do we know that or no?
Yes, they would. And so we're, we're having discussions with the state water board, make sure that the process we're going through here meets their requirements as well as the city's requirements. And that these would be costs that would be, would be reimbursed. And so they may be initial, initial expenditures that the city pays for. But then they could be wrapped into, into the overall loan and our grant. Grant probably a little bit, a little bit more difficult, but certainly the loan component, and so that you can capitalize on that moving forward. So just to give you a real, real quick recap of where we are in, in schedule. And this is a broad schedule because there's a lot still moving, a lot of moving parts still. As I mentioned, sixty percent design, we're looking at that being done here, June, July of this year. And, and so you have some information on that. State Water Source Control Board, we're going to have the applications in by end of March. They're saying that they may have their agreement ready as early as the end of June. More likely July, August timeframe, but is possibly as early as, as June this year. Then from there, then there's some decisions to be made in terms of how the funding opportunities layout to proceed with final design. If we go through some previous schedules, I, I presented to council in, in December twenty twenty-three that we, we had timeframes out there as, as, as late as the end of twenty twenty-eight. But if things come together favorably, particularly with state water board and FEMA potential for design to, to come forward and be completed as early as, as, uh, end of twenty twenty-six. That then dictates where the construction may go as well. So I have here, you know, an early schedule potential for our first quarter twenty twenty-seven as a bidding timeframe. And then construction starting in mid twenty twenty-seven. Or if again, funding elements require additional time, then that, that design or the bidding timeframe may be, as I mentioned here, third, third quarter twenty twenty-nine and, and then starting construction later in twenty twenty-nine. We're looking at about an overall, about a two, two-year construction project on this as well. That, there's a lot there. So that is the end of my recap. And certainly if there's any questions that the council have, be happy to, to answer those.
Could you remind me what the latest update was on FEMA?
So, so FEMA, we are still in the process of answering their questions. So we had the last question here, December twenty twenty-four, just some, some questions on some environmental elements. And our, our connection with FEMA is through, through Cal OES. And so we've been communicating with Cal OES is, is okay. Where's the city's application? What's, what's the status? What's the process? And so the only information we have at this point is, is that they've, they are completing their environmental review. That's, that's all we know at this point.
Your questions?
I believe I read in some of the documents, I was doing some history recall, that you were not just the farmers, but SSJID.
JID.
Yeah, district. Are you still working with them?
No, the, the feasibility study spread a wide net. And, and what we started off, we'd looked at is, is who might be the potential partners in recycled water. And again, kind of the focus was, was taking advantage of the city's existing sewer system coming to that site on the north side of the river. And then from there, what, what could be some of those, those other users? So we had a, a good amount of discussion with SSGID about the potential for partnering with them to the point of delivering water to their system. And so similar to like the North Valley Regional Recycle Water Project, so that kind of that's, that type of partnership, we had initial discussions with them. They showed initial interest, but there were a lot of questions still in their need in terms of the availability of their water compared to like Del Puerto. Very different water situations between those two entities. And so there's still interest there, but there were some hurdles that SSGID felt would, they would need to be in a, in a kind of higher demand condition to be able to, to really walk through with the city on. Things like what do you do with, with recycled water? Is it discharged into SSGID's system under an NPDS permit similar to what the North, North, the North Valley Regional Recycle Water Program is? Or is it a recycled water that has tailwater constraints on its use when it gets to the application? So SSGID had good discussion, but there were a lot of hurdles to, to implementing that. So, so then when we did the outreach to landowners within a sphere of the wastewater treatment plant, we had a lot of interest there and particularly from two, two individual growers that, that have a lot of property individually, either, either of those could, could take all the water that was produced. That, that kind of came out as the most feasible approach. And so that's what we wound up proceeding with.
So without them, how does this project become a regional, regionalization project, which I understand is going to be part of our, maybe our, possibly our future permit? If we're not regionalizing with them or other cities, how are we going to meet that, that, that request?
Yeah. So, well, from the, the growers' perspective, not seeing any hurdles with, with the growers, growers' interest from that perspective. The, the, the regional in the name of the project came, came from again, an, an initial assessment of could there, could there be a regionalization of ag water use locally? And so conceptualizing partnership with Oakdale, looking at the, the potential for partnership with, with Escalon. Those were initial concepts that were reviewed at kind of a broad level, but didn't, didn't move forward. You know, Oakdale at this point, kind of where they are, they've, they've got a, you know, process, a system going right now that, that works for them. So that didn't really come, come forward. I think Escalon, and Escalon has, and I, I don't know a lot of the details of where they are in their wastewater facilities, but I know from initial discussions that there was a potential for Escalon to be in a situation where they may be able to tie into a, a more of a regional process and, and take advantage of recycled water. So we haven't advanced those discussions any further than what the initial discussions were.
There still could be a concern about that with the board. I mean, with the permit, if we don't have some type of regionalization and it's just us.
Haven't, we haven't had, with the discussions with the, the water board, haven't had any concerns about kind of the regional nature of this. They, they're, they're looking at the program going from land disposal to incorporating a fairly substantial recycled water component. Seeing that as being consistent with the priorities of, of the, the regional board. And so right now, bringing in a regionalization component of it hasn't been a focus of, of any of our discussions with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item seven point three, presentation on the strategic plan progress report.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is an opportunity for me to share the progress that we have made on the strategic plan that was initially developed by the city council in twenty nineteen and then updated in twenty twenty-one. As I have shared with the city council, we will be looking at a strategic plan update during this year in order to incorporate any new projects that city council would like city staff to focus on. So just to remind everybody, the city's mission statement is that the mission of the city of Riverbank is to provide high-quality professional services and a safe, family-oriented community for our diverse residents to thrive. Now, the vision is that the city of Riverbank is going to be a regional leader in sustainable development, offering a unique, culturally diverse, safe and welcoming community with a thriving downtown, recreational opportunities for all ages and sustainable economy that supports our growing population. We've got some core values that help us to implement that vision, and that includes integrity, collaboration, transparency, diversity, respect, customer service, innovation and responsiveness. And so I'm going to go over a couple of updates from the strategic plan within the agenda document. For those that are interested, there's a, a more thorough analysis and progress report that can be viewed. So the, one of the city's goals is to ensure the city's continued financial stability. And so over the course of the past year, we've continued to seek local, regional and federal grant opportunities to support city projects, programs, initiatives, and especially those that provide funding for diversity and equity. So as we just heard from Mr. Colwell, we did apply for and are currently actively working on applications with the state water board as well as with the FEMA BRIC program. In addition, our Parks and Recreation Director was able to successfully obtain a grant through the National Park Service in order to have an update done to our Jacob Myers master plan. Second, explore the use of renewable energy for city operations and vehicles. So we have been able to continue our energy efficiency project that was approved by the city council back in twenty twenty-two. That included the solar installation at Wharton Park, at Community Center Park. And then this year we will be able to complete the one at the wastewater treatment facility. And then we also completed the one that's located here next door to, at our police services. Improve public safety to ensure adequate funding for appropriate levels of staffing for law enforcement and fire department personnel. Over the past year, we were able to add our SRO to our city staff and we were also able to make a formal request to the sheriff's department in order to add a community resource deputy to our staff. So we did make that approximately a year ago. So we hope that within the next year, we'll be able to add that new deputy to our program. And then that goes with number two, expand our community resource deputy program, which the addition of the staff request was made. Third, continue to support enhancements for safe routes to school. We've been able to make enhancements to our streets and sidewalks to ensure that our students and residents have a safe path to travel on, should they be walking to school or whenever they are offloaded from the bus service. Recently, we made improvements at Palmer and Patterson Road, which was an intersection where students were actually getting off and ending up in puddles because there was some storm drain issues. So we made enhancements there. Monitor the treatment, storage and delivery systems to ensure safe, reliable delivery of water. So currently, the city is in design for water wells number eleven and number thirteen. So those are in progress. Those, of course, will help to enhance the offering of water to all of our residents, especially during the summertime. Explore the use of technology to include cameras. We've been able to expand our camera project, which now has license plate readers or LPRs at intersections at Machado Way, which is that new entryway into the Costco Shopping Center as well as at Freddie Lane. And then we did move a camera over to Morrell and Oakdale Road to make sure we had coverage as well as a new camera at Homewood Way at the Roundabout and Squire Wells. Not Homewood Way, sorry, Squire Wells, behind the Target shopping, shopping center so that we made sure we had coverage coming out of that shopping center. And then of course, eliminate the use of illegal fireworks through aggressive and proactive monitoring. So thank you to the sheriff's department. We were able to use the Air 101 support this year in order to catch some of our illegal fireworks. And so we did issue seventeen citations in twenty twenty-four. All at a price of a thousand dollars. So just keep that in mind if you do, for this year. One of our next goals, improve our historic downtown. So support efforts that promote beautification of the physical environment, including public art. We were able to refresh some of our murals that were here in downtown. So that will keep our murals looking beautiful. Support the efforts of code enforcement. So we did have the addition of a part-time code enforcement officer added to this year's budget to be able to continue to support the work that our two full-time code enforcement officers do. This new part-time code enforcement officer will focus in on implementing our SB thirteen eighty-three, which is our solid waste and organics regulations and also our water conservation efforts. Explore opportunities for a facade improvement program. So the city council did allocate funds through our American Rescue Plan Act funds in order to offer our downtown businesses a grant for improvements to their facade. So thankfully, we were able to offer a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to our downtown businesses for those improvements. A hundred and eighty thousand. That's what we granted out. Yes. Explore opportunities for lighting and landscaping enhancements. So the city did bring forward a proposal to allocate funds for a lighting improvement project here in downtown. So our Parks and Recreation Director is working with our project coordinator to be able to get quotes that we can bring forward to the city council for consideration. And then support community events produced by local nonprofit agencies. So certainly we were able to have new programs come in. We had fee waivers that were approved for Toys for Tots, our Federated Women's Club and Strut Optimist Christmas luncheon. And many of the events that happened last year in coordination with nonprofits, we were able to be partners with through the fee waivers that were offered. Next goal, improve internal and external communication. So proactively communicate news about the city to residents, businesses and surrounding communities. So we were able to approve a social media communication contract in October twenty twenty-four. We hope that residents have been enjoying all of the additional information that our consultant, Jane Media Services, has been able to provide to residents to ensure that everybody stays informed. And ensure appropriate linguistic translation of materials to engage the city's Hispanic population. Last year, we issued the draft environmental impact report for the Riverwalk project, which we know is a significant project here in the city of Riverbank that is currently still being developed and under evaluation. We did have a consultant translate that so that we could ensure that our Hispanic population had an opportunity to that, review that document as well. Next goal, to encourage employee development. We conducted a review of the city's management tools, including GIS. And at the last meeting, the city council did approve a contract for our GIS services so that we can continue to enhance our mapping. Consider shared administration positions to support multiple departments. That is sort of an ongoing item that we've had. And so of course, as I mentioned earlier, we do have the code enforcement position that was approved. That's going to be shared between planning water and our solid waste. That's going to be shared between Planning Water and our Solid Waste. Review technological tools and software to ensure maximum efficiency. So, we have been looking to transition to Microsoft 365. That was approved through the fiscal year budget. So, we will be looking at implementing that within the next month or two. And our planning department has been working on a implementation of a solar app plus system for online solar permits to be issued. Then, research feasibility of a new city hall to accommodate current and future needs. The city council did approve for staff to move forward with a feasibility study of locations that are here in our downtown. And so, that will be brought forward to city council next month. And next goal, promote sustainable development. Follow the North County Corridor project and its impacts to Riverbank. So, we are in constant communication with the county with regards to this project. Initially, we have had discussions with them with regards to easements that were needed, which are going to be located near the Riverbank Army Ammunition Plant. And then, just recently, they shared that they will be issuing or awarding the bid for that project in the upcoming month as well. And our housing element update, that was an item that we worked on through all of 2024. Thank you to our planning department and our consultant, J.B. Anderson Land Use Planning. We were able to submit that draft housing element to the state, and we will be meeting with them next, actually, on Thursday in order to get some initial feedback from them. Support economic development that promotes job-housing balance. So, one of the objectives there is to complete the Crossroads West development. Everybody has seen all of the work being done out at Crossroads West Commercial. So, we had the ribbon cutting for Costco in June of '24. And then Wendy's and Chase Bank are near completion, so we'll be looking at ribbon-cutting ceremonies for them sometime in February, early March. And then Raising Canes, TJ Maxx, and Home Goods are currently under construction. Complete the conveyance of the Army property to the city. Of course, that continues to be worked on. Currently, we are working on the lease in furtherance of conveyance, which would allow AMEDIS to move forward with the construction of their sustainable aviation fuel plant. And so, this lease would be a fifty-year long-term lease with the Army. And enhance quality of life, maintain and refresh the parks, trails, and facilities to provide exceptional services. So, through our American Rescue Plan Act funding, we were able to approve upgrades to Castleburg Park and Pioneer Park. And just recently, there was a modification made to the new trail at Castleburg Park to enhance our ADA access in that vicinity. And support community-driven, multicultural events. So, of course, the success of our Dia de los Muertos event went very well this past year, and then continuing to support the annual Mexico Mágico event, which typically happens in June. And I believe this year, it may be in May. And engage the community and nonprofit partners in the development of programs, facilities, transitional housing, and solutions for our homeless. So, we were happy to be able to have the dedication ceremony for our Sierra House in October of 2024. And that is all for the strategic plan progress report and update. So, as I mentioned earlier, city council will be undergoing a full update to all of the goals and objectives on the strategic plan. Once that date is set, we will invite members of the public to attend to be able to provide us with your feedback. So, the current strategic plan was adopted in '21. Changes have occurred at the council level. So, we want to make sure that the new plan incorporates those new priorities. And then, currently, the plan doesn't prioritize our projects for the five-year period or provide a method to measure success. And so, we want to make sure that those performance measures are incorporated into the new strategic plan. So, we will be scheduling that within the next month or so. And that is all.
Thank you. Yes, so it was a lot that we have accomplished in the last few years. Are there any questions or comments from council? Okay, thank you. Public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. And with the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRE Board, individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes, and the time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For those that came in a little later, we did pull item 9.6 for discussion later. So, the matter dealing with the Verizon Wireless Cell Tower will be discussed at a later time. Are there any public comments?
Mayor, we have Steve Wallace.
Hello, I'm Steve Wallace. I live out here on Santa Fe. I live east of Central, between Central and Snidiger. You guys have developed all those houses out there, and there's no law enforcement. The people come off of Patterson, head north on Snidiger, go west on Santa Fe at rapid, rapid rates. I mean, they're fast out there, and they run the stop sign at Central. So, I would ask you guys to look into it. I don't know if any speed bumps, that's your guys' issue, that's not mine. But the problem is, is the speed out there. I just hung a sign out off my fence. Problem also is, is I'm county, it's city, it's like no man's land. It's dirt bikes, four-wheelers, all kinds of stuff traveled because they know there's no law enforcement out there. Usually, in the evenings, is when they come off of Patterson and come down there, and they're traveling forty, fifty miles an hour. And most of them, and as it gets darker, are running that stop sign. I have talked to one officer. He sat, he wrote a couple tickets that day, and he said, well, you just need to call when you see people. I'm tired of calling, you know, I've called several times. The guy across the street, catty-corner from me, he calls. I don't think I should have to call. I think you guys ought to look into that neighborhood out there. You know, you've added two to three hundred homes out there, and I don't see any cops. I'm retired. I see what's going on out there. I'm around all the time. So, anyway, if you could look in between Central and Snidiger on Santa Fe.
It's close to forty now. They order at twenty-five, but they don't do twenty-five. They're going fifty and sixty.
They are. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Wallace, are you going to go next?
Okay. I've exhausted every resource I can, I have. I've talked to Riverbank Police four times. I made an appointment, went out to the SO on Hackett, talked to them, and I called the DEA last week. I have a drug problem next door to me. There is traffic. You wouldn't believe, this has been going on for four years. And I'm not going to tell you the pertinence. Somebody can contact me, law enforcement can contact me, or I'll talk to somebody after I leave this podium. There's an issue there. The people that are there have been arrested. They got a CPO against each other. I called about that. Nobody will enforce that. There's a minor, there's actually a four-year-old little girl there. And then she has three other kids that show up on weekends. And I've seen, the neighbors have seen it, I'm here talking for my neighbors, there's four of us right there. And the drug traffic is bad. Handing off stuff in the driveway. It just
We know what's going on. They're up all night long. Hit up at like four o'clock in the afternoon sometimes, and then they're just up all night, waking us up. It's really bad.
So, if somebody, you have my phone number on that, if somebody could contact me, I'm going to call the DEA tomorrow and see if they followed up or want to talk to me about anything. I'll give them all the information they need. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gary Pearson?
Good evening, and my name is Gary Pearson, reside at 2209 Cedarwood Circle. Three weeks ago, I was serving in a rural community called Planada, which is ten miles east of Merced. Just over two years ago, this local community of forty-seven hundred residents was flooded with eighty percent of the homes under flood. I volunteered with Habitat for Humanity and Mennonite Disaster Relief for a week. We provided our skills as repair people, construction, plumbing, painting, installing showers, floors, electrical for those local homes. Now, there are still a hundred and sixty homes that have requested to have various repairs done to bring those homes back to a livable condition. Each week, there are fifteen volunteers and support staff that go to this community and provide the repairs necessary at no cost to the residents. These volunteers are from all over the U.S., and I've met a few, and there's also some from California. I worked alongside young adults, seasoned folks like myself, small walks of life. My story included building a closet, installing sheet rock, installing a door for a family of five. As I sat there and had lunch with this family and listened to how their family has recovered somewhat. Being, this family is low income, having a house they call home is very important, and it's an agricultural community. I sat there with Maya and watched her make her own lunch of mandarins, almonds, and shredded cheese. It was a unique experience. Her other little sister went out to their shed and pulled her tools of a saw, screwdriver, and drill. I was able to teach her the simple things of how these tools were used on the door I was installing. Of course, the work is not finished, and the Habitat team and Mennonite team will be there on site through the end of March. Habitat also rebuilt a house in downtown Merced that was destined for demolition. This project, after Habitat leaves, will be used for homeless folks in the city. As the pastor, Carla, said, "This is not a period, but a common time." It is in the process of serving homeless and low-income folks. As the city of Riverbank considers future developments such as Riverwalk, let us remember the lessons learned about Planada. Merced County and the state of California failed to maintain a levee and drainage creek next to Planada. Let us, as a city, be proactive in considering the Riverwalk project since there is a levee that is not state-reviewed and approved, as I've come to learn from the State Levee Commission and other agencies. As the AIR becomes finalized, I urge this council to consider this question. Would you all personally build a community next to a river and levee that would likely fail, given the likelihood of high river flows during these atmospheric waters?
Mr. David Collins?
Good morning, Mayor, council members, honored guests. My name is David Collins. I'm the Love Our Schools Program Director with Love Stanislaus County, a local nonprofit organization. Cardozo Middle School has partnered with us to provide support to their campus and their students in the form of community volunteers, classroom support, and small special events. Campus administration is very excited to get started. You saw Mrs. Azavito here tonight. But the response from the community so far has not been what we'd hoped. So, today, I'm here not asking for any kind of funding, but rather to directly ask you for your active assistance in connecting with one or more groups of people to support our local school. I would love to talk to any or all of you about creatively serving our students for the rest of the school year. I can joyfully go into greater detail later. You will not get me to shut up, I promise you. But now is not the time for that. So, I really hope that we can connect sometime, hopefully later this week. Appreciate you listening. Thank you for your community service, and have a good night.
Mr. Eddie, Eddie Quayor?
My name is Eddie Quayor. I've been a resident of Riverbank for over eleven years now, over in the Crossroads Developmental Report. And honestly, until this last campaign, I didn't know much about the city council government of the city of Riverbank, because it always seemed like it was a little hush-hush. You don't need to know about it. Let us do our thing. Now, thanks to Mayor Rachel and Councilmember Stacy, who took the time to come to my door, knock, ask how things are going. Of course, they got my votes, but they made myself and the residents of my neighborhood feel like we're now a welcome part of the community. We're not just to be shut up and pushed off to the side, pay your taxes. Now, we can actually be heard, and I want to thank you guys for that. And now, I plan on hopefully not talking too much, being here, wanting for you guys to hear things that are going on out there. Secondly, about your bringing in businesses in the town, the developmental report. I think it's great that we have Costco. I'm sure that really helps out with our taxes and help them bring more residents from out of the area into Riverbank. I'm really looking forward to the other places coming up. I know my wife is very happy about TJ Maxx and Home Goods. I can hear her already, though, where's Ross? On that note, we would like to see some competition. You know, competition makes everybody greater. So, the competition to Costco, Sam's Club. Competition to Target, Walmart. We've got empty land over here by the movie theaters, across the street from Estelle and the Car Wash. We've got empty land on Roselle between there and the bend where the canal turns from going west to going north. Why don't we use lots like that and put one of those places or some of those places and get more business in here so that we can bring in more tax dollars and more people from outside? Then you won't have all these people saying, "Where's Riverbank?" when you say, "I live in Riverbank." Thank you.
Mr. Michael, I'm going to butcher your last name.
I won't butcher it. I'm trying to.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I live in District Four for twenty-one years now. And my concern tonight is the walking path. It starts on Oakdale Road and goes all the way through Sorensen Park, and then along the canal and continues towards, I'm sorry, Lariville. It's awfully dark. It's, it just wasn't, it wasn't a well-designed, you know, path. I'm sure if you're, you know, retired maybe, and you have, you know, consecutive days off, and you can go during the daytime, but I'm not the only one that gets up at 5:00 a.m. to go running. I see a pretty good amount of people out there, and I've had a lot of friends and neighbors ask me to speak tonight about it and to see what maybe Parks and Rec can do to look into it, landscape lighting. So, I could provide the council members pictures and email them over to you of how dark it is. But other than Sorensen Park maybe being lit up, it's a big concern in our neighborhood. So, again, if it's best that I email Councilmember Call, and then she could forward them all to you, and perhaps we could have another, it could be on the agenda future. Lastly, I'd like to thank everyone in the council and the city here for your service, because if it was such an easy thing to do, we would all be running on the ballots against you. So, again, I'd like to, you know, on behalf of the Crossroads and my neighbors and friends over there, we'd like to thank you for your service to the city.
Ms. Howard?
Getting it, everyone. I think my situation might be a small thing. But what I was going to speak on is about the street sweeping. Are they supposed to be canceling, sweeping Riverbank streets? You guys know anything about that?
Yeah, we could, we could answer your question afterwards if you want to continue with your comment.
Okay, because I talked to the man that sweeps my street. I live on Texas. And I've been living there for some years, over twenty-five, really. And he said that they want And he said that, uh, they were, they were gonna counsel sweeping Riverbank streets. And so, anyway, um, sometimes the, the cars be in the way and they can't sweep the streets, so I wanna make a, maybe a suggestion, maybe they can have a rotation system, sweep one side. Excuse me, sweep one side one week or however they wanna do it, and then sweep the other side cuz it'd be cars, like, in a way. Sometimes I sweep the front of my street myself. But now, kinda like, you know, I've got older and stuff, it's kinda hard. So I think if you pay your taxes, you should be really be having your streets clean. And then I have the same problem about lighting. It's dark on my street, and I spoke about that about, oh, maybe twenty-fourteen or something like that. I've done nothing about it. It's too dark. So. And one more question, I, wha- can you tell me what, what is all this digging up and tearing up the streets? You know what that's for? What they making these plates on the streets when you drive is tearing up your car?
Let's finish your comment. That way you get the time allotted, and, uh, we're making notes right now of all your questions.
That's all right. I mean, I had more, but I'm gonna leave it like that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Olivia?
Good evening, Mayor Hernandez, council members, and city officials, everyone attending tonight. My name's Olivia Ramula. I'm broker and owner of Timeless Real Estate here in Riverbank, but here I am here tonight on behalf of the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to share some upcoming events, invite everyone up here and so in the audience here to some of these events. Um, first off, it is a very quick notice, but we do have LGI Homes tomorrow having a ribbon cutting. It's gonna be between six PM and eight PM. It's a ribbon cutting mixer that is located here off of Patterson, right up the road, and, um, kinda behind the high school, if you don't know where that's at. So they're gonna go ahead and have that for a couple hours, come out and visit, and, um, hopefully have those homes open so you can tour them if you'd like. And then, coming up in February, I wanna give you notice now, so you can put this on calendar. We have, on February twelfth, we have a Lunch and Learn from twelve PM to one PM at Collective Spaces, where, um, so are we sharing a social media and teaching us how to use reels or make reels and different items for your business to grow that? Um, and then also, thank you for letting us use the Chamber facilities. Thank you, Montezella, for helping us out with this. SBDC will be coming here and partnering with the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce, and they are going to bring a representative that's going to teach about quarterly tax preparations to, um, help your business out and get you set up for the tax year. And then, just because we have some other, um, businesses that are joined with us, I like to share their events. You may have heard them, maybe not, but I wanna make sure we have them out there so you can support everybody. Um, we do have fundraisers going on with Red Robin on February eighth and in February twelfth. They're gonna do the, um, the all-day fundraiser. If you mention Love Riverbank, they're going to provide twenty percent of the proceeds to Love Riverbank, and all you have to do is tell them Love Riverbank. You don't need to give them anything, just come in and eat those days. Uh, so plan that out. Um, also, um, the CBCR, um, Central Valley Community Resources is having their annual crab feed. It's, um, all about the love that day, and that's gonna be held at the, um, Riverbank Community Center that evening. Um, they are always looking for sponsorship and help with that, or if you wanna donate any gift baskets or drawing items. I attended last year. It was a great event, very fun, met new people, and I have been bought lots of stuff that he won, um, in the, uh, auctions. And then we have, um, Parks and Recs doing two things. We have my little one and me on February eighth from five PM to seven PM. That's open to everyone, not just children and their specific parent, like parents, grandparents. Bring your little one out there. It's from five to seven. Um, and then Parks and Recs is going to do a Parents' Night Out on Valentine's Day, so you can spend it alone with your spouse. Um, ages six to ten, I believe. I might be off by the last age, six to ten, six to twelve. Um, and it's gonna be from six-thirty to nine PM. Drop off your kids, and Parks and Recs will have people out there who are professional to watch them. Thank you.
And then we have a couple on Zoom. Uh, can't start with Ms. Eggers. Can you please unmute? Norma, it's not letting me ask her to unmute. Uh, Ms. Eggers, can you hear us? She put her hand down. Um, number ending in three-one-zero-eight?
There, I finally got the unmute signal. Can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Jamie Eggers. I live outside the city of Riverbank, but within the proposed project area of the Riverwalk project. As the mayor and council member Uribe know, I have spoken to the council many, many times over the past three and a half years about the Riverrock project and my opposition to it. Um, this evening, I would simply like to welcome the three new council members to Riverbank and make note of the fact that myself and one of your constituents, Gary Pearson, who spoke earlier this evening, have reached out to the three of you approximately a week ago requesting a meeting, and neither of us have received a response at this point. So I would encourage you to please be responsive, uh, whether you can't meet or are unable to meet. It would just be great to have a response, and we hopefully look forward to meeting with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, number ending in three-one-zero-eight? Number ending in three-one-zero-eight. Can you please unmute? We're gonna have to move on if you can unmute. They hung up. That is all, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, and just a quick note, uh, please make sure their city clerk has your information so we can get you appropriate information, um, after the meeting. Uh, thank you for making public comment for those of you that have, um, consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action. Um, so nine-point-one wave ratings, all readings of ordinances and resolutions except by title are waived. Nine-point-two approval of the City Council Local Redevelopment Authority Board minutes for January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Item nine-three, resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute an investment fiduciary and retirement plan consulting agreement with the Baldwin Group Wealth Advisors LLC for ongoing administration services of the city's deferred compensation plan. Item nine-four, resolution accepting the annual financial report for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. And item nine-five, resolution for the award bid, uh, for the Woodhaven Drywell Catch Basin and Hardscape Project to Sinclair General Engineering Construction, Inc., and authorize execution of future change orders. Are there any council comments or questions on items nine-one to nine-five?
Mayor, I have a correction to the minutes. So the minutes, um, of January fourteenth need to reflect that the Sister City Committee appointment should reflect Councilmember Pimentel as the primary, not Mayor Hernandez, and I'll make that correction.
So is there any public comment for any item on the consent calendar? And is there a motion to approve consent calendar as changed?
So I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar, nine-point-one through nine-point-five, with the correction to the Sister City Committee, uh, appointment of Councilmember Pimentel.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero.
Okay, um, at this point, we're going to review item nine-point-six. So the resolution approving a land lease agreement and the memorandum of land lease agreement with Verizon Wireless to install a cell tower at Castleburg Park and authorizing city manager to execute said agreements. Uh, as a reminder, we will discuss this, um, on the March eleventh, uh, agenda for city council, but are there any questions from council currently? Right now, any public comment on this item? You can share right now, yeah. Just, uh, state your name, please.
My name is Kelly Velasco. I'm a resident here of Riverbank. I've been a resident for almost eight years now. Um, since living here, I've had three beautiful children that I've raised here, and I absolutely love Riverbank. I think that, um, we've done a lot over the past year, year and a half. Um, specifically with our Parks and Recs Department, um, they've done great things to improve our parks, um, build community, and implement a bunch of change, um, to our community. I'm coming to address you guys both as a parent and as an educator. I have an in-home state license preschool program here in Riverbank. Um, it's a fully outdoor-based preschool program, um, so the entire four hours we're together, we are outside. Um, I live less than half a mile from Castleburg Park. So I'm here to kindly but aggressively decline the inflammation of the Verizon wireless towers, um, near Castleburg Park for various reasons. Um, the first being that I was talking to Mr. Luis, um, on Facebook and reading through the comments, and it was said that there's not a lot of proof that shows that these are dangerous. Um, however, if you look directly on American Cancer Society's website, they state that they cannot show that this doesn't have any impact, um, because there hasn't been any testing on this. There's not a whole lot of testing for this specific, this specific area. And the reason being is this is all new. Um, we haven't had towers, cell phones for very long. So although there may not be any short-term, um, any short-term effects right now, we can't cap confidently say that there's no long-term effects. So we have to look at this as a global and a local, um, situation. Globally, America is one of the only countries that implements these towers. Why? Because other countries are unsure of the long-term effects of these towers. Locally, we can just look very shortly at Ripon, where they implemented these towers, very close to an elementary school. In a, in a short amount of time, a lot of staff and a lot of kids got very ill, with some of them developing cancer, and they are still fighting cancer to this day. Now, as a parent and, and as an educator, this makes me insanely nervous to have my kids and these other kids that are in my care every week, so close to this. As a state license program, it is my responsibility to ensure these kids are safe while they're in my care, and I can protect them from various things. I have precautions, I have locks, I meet all of the state requirements. But I can't confidently say that I can protect them from something that we don't know the long-term results of. Now, I do have a question on why this is going in Castleburg. Castleburg is a very frequent park, not only by our community members, but also other people that come for baseball and football. This park is frequently visited. And with the Riverbanks, Parks, and Recs adding this new park, I assume more people are going to be coming to our park. Um, everybody around the area is very excited for these updates of this park. However, now this excitement has changed to fear for me on how this is gonna impact me who goes there with my own kids or just living such a short distance from the park. I also am worried that it is less than half a mile from California Elementary School. It's very, very close to be so close to a school. And I, I'm talking specifically about kids because I'm a mother and an educator, but I mean everybody that lives around that area. There's a lot of people in that short amount of distance, and we don't know exactly how far this is going to reach or what the long-term effects could be on this. Um, another issue I have is Castleburg is predominantly a non-English-speaking community. I haven't seen anything in their native language showing what this could have. Not only that, these people that live in this community may not have resources to fully understand the impacts that this could have on their health or their children's health. And most importantly, people in this community may not have the resources to healthcare that they need if and when these towers show effects on their health. Now, I understand why this was put in, um, or why this is wanted, and I fully agree that Parks and Recs is doing an amazing job, and I understand the funding reasoning for it. However, I propose a different location for it, such as Jacob Myers or Rainbow Fields. Um, somewhere that's still close enough to town that the towers are effective, but not close enough that they're providing or impacting day-to-day radiation or other causes to the people that live in the community. Um, I, like I said, I appreciate everything you guys have done, and I appreciate everything that Parks and Recs has done. However, I think that this needs to be readdressed in a different way or moved to a different location. I'm not completely against it. I just worry that there is not enough data that shows that this is okay, especially so close in proximity to an elementary school or children of different disabilities or different abilities, or even just our elderly community in the area. Thank you.
Um, any other co- public comment?
Hello again, Michael Christie from Crossroads. Um, I would love to see, um, council and city be able to work with the developer, maybe Costco Tower over there, far enough away from the new homes. Cuz I, I have AT&amp;T, and my cellphone service is awful, over, I'm over, um, in Crossroads near the, um, Cadet, um, center. And, uh, so I would love to see them work with Verizon and AT&amp;T and get something over there away from the homes and, uh, get on the, you know, the, um, land, be pass Wendy's, how far the center goes. Maybe the developer would welcome, uh, a partnership with the council and save them some money on fees. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
And, um, ma- sorry. Mayor Rachel Hernandez and council members, and Olivia Ramula, broker and retiree of Real Estate again. Um, just listening to the information, I don't have the full information to make a decision on what's going on as far as it goes, or know everything that's going on with this cell tower going up. Um, but I, when I first heard that before, um, our resident got up to speak, um, I was thinking the same thing. We don't know enough what's going on in order to see if cancer is gonna be resolved or something in the future. Um, and while, um, while she was up here speaking, I was thinking that possibly a place that that tower could go is the back area, back of Jacob Meyer, where we have like the haunted hayride area and stuff like that. I don't know, um, how close to homes that is right there. Um, but that just maybe would be a possibility. I know that as far as the Costco area goes, I believe the plan is to build homes on either side of that area, so I don't think we'd wanna put anything there. Um, but maybe something along those lines there, or possibly along, I'm not sure which part of the river we own, um, or the city owns county, um, as far as that, along the river, about the area where we clean it for Love Riverbank area. And Luis knows. Um, so maybe that area might be something that's gonna be not so impactful to the rest of the community, so um, I don't agree it should go in a park or around children, so we can just look at some other, um, choices. That'd be great. Thanks.
Public comment? Anyone else? Okay, so, uh, we will come back to that item on March eleventh meeting. Um...
Is it okay if I make a, just a quick comment? I know, I know we've tabled it, so we're not gonna discuss it. We're not gonna make any decisions now. Um, just, just for a little background, um, I, I did get a lot of residents reaching out. This is in my district, and every single person in my district does not want this, and I think it's something that we can discuss in strategic planning, uh, putting in an ordinance on what can and what shouldn't be in parks, and, I mean, I don't think an antenna, uh, we would want as a centerpiece in a park, right? What's kind of the message that we're trying to put out there is, uh, for me, a centerpiece would be the playground, the, the baseball field, right? The security, the cameras, you know, where your kids can go out there and, and be safe and do that kind of stuff. Uh, so that's something I think, um, that we should work on, um, in ordinance, just kinda keeping antennas out of parks. I think would be a, uh, something feasible, something we can do. Um, and looking for further discussions at the next meeting for this. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, so is there any direction that needs to be given to that? Okay. There are no public hearings scheduled. New business, eleven-point-one, a discussion on the direction for the Founder's Day Carnival and/or Cultural Music Festival.
Mayor and council, uh, Michael Patton, our Director of Parks and Recreation, is going to present an option for our typical Founder's Day Carnival that's held every year at the same time as Love Riverbank.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
Evening, mayor and council. For my colorful presentation I made for you guys. I want to give you note though, we did receive comment that our presentations are kind of bland, so we're trying to spice it up a little bit. So yeah, I got right blue here. So we have, we have an interesting proposal we want to talk to you guys or talk to city council about. Every year in April since 2022, the Parks and Recreation Department has hosted a Founder's Day Carnival. This kind of started when the, when the city celebrates its, its tenial. Tons of events throughout that year, and my understanding is that the carnival was such a hit that council gave the direction of, we would love to see this happen annually. So for those that are, look for some history here. So like I mentioned, we kind of held the event, Parks and Recreation, we held it at the Community Center Park. We have carnival activities that are free to the community. This is kind of a city council initiative to offer, give back to the community with a free event. We've had vendors that would sell food, crafts, and it's kind of tied in with Love Riverbank in the way of go out and serve your community, improve the community, and then come back and kind of stay together, have that unity and celebrate Riverbank all in one, one afternoon. So this year, staff and I, staff have been planning on our events for 2025, and we had a proposal come out. We have a group, a nonprofit group called Somar Youth Project. And the past three years, they've hosted some sort of cultural music festival in Modesto. They have worked with us on our car show here at Cheese and Wine. So we have a kind of a working relationship with, with the, let's say, the CEO of this nonprofit. And he enjoyed working with us and has had issues with the city of Modesto where he said, hey, we're looking to jump ship. We want to do it here in Riverbank. With that being said, he wants to do it the same day of Love Riverbank and the usual Founder's Day Carnival. His event would include live entertainment, car show, vendors, games, prizes, the whole shebang. The event will be here, be held downtown, be right here on the intersection right here. Car show going down, right here, Third Street going all the way to Stanislaus. You have vendors right here between Third and Second. So the issue is, again, it's on the same as our carnival, which we held at the community center. And so staff and the event promoter, we've sat down, talked to how can make it all work. So we decided we want to propose to council an idea of we would forego the carnival portion of the event and partner with this promoter to host this music festival downtown on that same day. The benefits of this proposal that we see as staff is it reduces our time in planning and executing a full-on event at a carnival. The promoter, he's taken on the all-the-day planning of recruiting the vendors, organizing the musicians, car show. He's also providing those expenditures as well, so the city's not going out, you know, paying live entertainment to go into it. We project that this would be a higher attended event. For the carnival, we usually see maybe about two thousand people throughout the whole day. We expect this one to see far more than that. He does have bands that are well, more, more well-known in the region that'll attract people from other cities to come down here to Riverbank and hang out in our downtown. And then in the strategic plan, the city council had a goal, eight point two, to develop strong local partnerships. And over the past year, Parks and Recreation Department has been striving to develop those partnerships. With the reason being, you know, we're so limited staff and capacity to do so many things. And so if we're able to partner, if we're able to accomplish more and provide better benefits to this community.
Michael, if you can back up just one slide before you go on. In the plaza there, is that where the music will be happening?
So currently, how they have it set up is right here at the intersection. The stage will be in the middle of the road facing this way.
I got it.
Yep. And so the plaza will be, as of right now, open. We're looking at ways to fill it in with Kids Corner or we talked about maybe Love Riverbank as a meetup spot. So we're trying to work with the promoter on how they want to tie that in. One other thing, keep note, I want to discuss is usually with the carnival and Love Riverbank, the city's usually held a health fair at the community center. We want to make sure that the community knows that the resources that are available to, for health or whatever the needs community may have. And so talking with the promoter, we have said between Santa Fe and Topeka here on Third Street, we'll designate as our health fair. So you saw the health fair, car show, vendors, live entertainment. It'll start from eleven AM till eight PM with entertainment going on throughout the whole day. So staff wants to make the recommendation of foregoing the Founder's Day Carnival and partnering with Somar Youth Project for twenty twenty-five for this year. The reason why we're going to use councils, because again, this was a, the carnival was a council-driven event that they want to see. And so with us making the decision to do this, we want to make sure you give your feedback input and have your direction on this. And so we'd love to open up for questions.
Any questions from council?
Yeah, if you can kind of go into a little bit more, so what is the actual plan for the plaza? You said you want it to, it's going to be for the youth. Are you guys taking that on or is the promoter doing that part?
Yeah, we are currently talking with him what, what his ideas are. If it's a little bit lackluster, we'll jump in and help out. To kind of give you a little more feedback on the financial side, the city council has budgeted fifteen thousand dollars to go towards the carnival. With this event going in, we save that cost, we make that cost savings to where now as staff, we may be able to have staff help out there with road closures, some part-time staff helping out with trash pickup. And obviously, if there's a Kids Corner that we believe that the promoter's not planning to use too much on, we can then funnel staff and kind of fill in our own thing there.
What about parking for everybody that's coming to it? So you said it'd be more than two thousand, so I'm thinking maybe five. Where are they going to park?
We kind of tie it in the same way we do with Cheese and Wine, just you, you know, find parking where you can and along the streetways and follow your way here to downtown. So with Cheese and Wine, you usually have people park along in the neighborhoods on that way.
Have we talked to the other businesses in the area about the event?
We have talked to some. We are waiting for your guidance first before we make it official. We usually don't like to share a lot of things until it's official just because misinformation gets spread or I thought Parks and Rec was doing this, but now they're doing this. So we're kind of waiting for your guidance before we kind of disseminate information. But we do know our, the event promoter is very, very eager. He's kind of so excited, he's already jumped the gun and kind of already started handing out flyers to the downtown businesses. Some even have it posted in their windows, so they're aware of it. So I think there's a general knowledge, but we, kind of with Cheese and Wine, we, when you, when Cheese and Wine happen, we let business know about months in advance of what's going to happen. We anticipate to do the same thing.
And I just want to make sure that you're going to have adequate entertainment for children because the carnival was more children-focused. This event doesn't scream ten and under to me, if I'm being honest. So I just want to make sure that there's going to be an adequate Kids Corner for ten and under essentially, because that's what the carnival attracts.
Yep. So if the promoter, we, we, so we're in constant contact with promoter, and if we get a vibe that it's not satisfying enough to that, Parks and Rec, we're planning on jumping in and saving that, so.
And I, and I'm in agreement with the council member call. If you guys can just be, maybe just be a little proactive at the beginning, suggest some things, see how it's taken, and then, and then kind of go from there. Because I would, every time we end the Love Riverbank, my daughter's looking forward to, to this Founder's Day Carnival, right? And so I would love, I'm, I'm for this. Founder's Day, Founder's Day Carnival was for the centennial thing, so trying something new. I, I have no issue with that, especially, I know you love partnerships and this is, this is right up your alley, so I'm, I'm absolutely for it. So, but I would like to see the, the, the kids aspect, the family aspect of it continue, so.
So you guys seen our events. We'll, we'll make sure to stay in care.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm getting like negative flashbacks from pre-year time with the Cheese and Wine. And, but I fully trust that you will have the communication at the front end. Because I think that was, to your point, something that was missing with our local businesses too, to have them be involved a little bit more as we move forward with a larger event.
Yeah, and to give you guys an idea for Cheese and Wine, one hot summer day, I walked out with a packet of information about, you know, Cheese and Wine, what to expect, who to call, maps. We went to every single downtown business and handed it off to them. And so with something like this where they're going to see a big influx that day, we're giving them some months of, you know, months of preparation notice and kind of do the same round. So the, even if they like me or hate me, they'll see my face again here soon, so.
Any other comments? One second. Any, any public comments? Any questions? Can you come up here? Do you want to, do you want to say to over here at the, the mic for us?
I'm with him. I like his idea, but I don't have any kids. I mean, not little kids, grandkids, but they have fun either way. Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, yeah, so.
Mayor, there was, there was one on Zoom. Number ending in three one zero eight. Norma, I'm not able to ask him to unmute. Phone number ending in three one zero eight. Can you please unmute?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and your comment.
My name is Evelyn. I am a resident downtown, and I don't think anybody's talked to any of the residents down here about this. I'm understanding that this was a presentation that was not going to be voted on tonight. I think you should at least give a little more information to the public here before you're doing this. The other question I have is, are you totally throwing out Founder's Day or are you going to move it to another date? Because that's been, that's probably our longest, one we've had the longest here since the city was, came out, was laid out.
Did you have anything else?
No, just pointed out that it's a presentation and it shouldn't be voted on. The, the residents are public too. They need more information on it. And maybe address Founder's Day when you come back.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Evelyn and I, we had, we talked earlier today about situations like this with Founder's Day, Carnival. We're looking again for go the carnival part of it. I think with Founder's Day, you can see it's found around August time, so looking at Founder's Day Carnival, it makes sense to do it in April. So staff were aware of that, this kind of feedback, and we are, we'll work on, again, working with partnerships. We talked about working with Historical Society where history is very vital important, and maybe we can do a partnership on an event there that, again, doesn't put too much stress on our staff and resources. And then, again, we develop that partnership to provide something good to the community that honors our heritage and history.
As for speaking with the residents, could you, I don't know if you've hashed this out yet, but the marketing communications.
Yeah, we, we, again, we're waiting for a direction. So once we get kind of a clear direction, if the council says, hey, let's go this direction on doing the festival, you'll see social media hit up tomorrow with all the information on it. We'll kind of do the same thing we did with Cheese and Wine, again, letting downtown residents and businesses aware of what's going on, so.
Who's going to be providing the security for this event?
So we have talked with the Sheriff's Department, a little aware with their contract. They do help us out with, with the, our community events, talking with, we're talking with them. They rise up right now, we don't see any issues. They'll have extra staff to kind of run around the area and be aware of that. But again, if there's a requirement or we have the feel that we need to have more, a third party, more security on site, we will talk to promoter because that would be the expense that they'll be incurring.
A public comment?
I'd just like to say that, you know, since we've been doing Love Riverbank and having the Founder's Fair there at the end of the day has just brought such community. And, and I, I've heard people talk about the best part of the day is just being able to talk to each other in a, you know, a nice city environment and a space. And, and this particular thing, I think that Michael's doing, I think is just going to absolutely complement it, and it's going to allow more of the city to come together. I, I, since I've been in Riverbank, I think that's the thing that was missing the more. And I've heard some of our residents say they've kind of felt left out, but having an opportunity to just touch the city in so many different ways will just bring participation. And I really believe it's going to be a, a hit for sure. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
Just a quick one. So I, it, it is going to be a smaller footprint, but I would like to allocate a budget for it. So we did fifteen thousand for Founder's, smaller footprint, if council's okay with it, at, up to ten thousand. I, I really want to see this family, family aspect of it. So if we can commit up to ten thousand for that part, if it's needed.
So the funds are already allocated. So at this point in time, not having the Founder's Day Carnival, we would be able to reallocate it towards this program if we decide to move forward.
Perfect.
And may I, I'll show this appropriate time to throw it in, but we'll throw it in. Mari Sel, correct me tomorrow if I'm wrong here. One of the idea that we've had as staff with this fifteen thousand is we do have a lot of requests from nonprofit organizations that throw fantastic things, like the Mexico Machiko event that, you know, it's a fantastic cultural event in the community that there's always we can help that we're just like, we don't have the resources to. And, you know, with Federated Women's Club, Historical Society, it's kind of the same boat. And so the idea that the department's had is, I'll kind of fifteen thousand to kind of offer support to these other groups that, you know, with these events. And so I said we'll talk with Mari Sel, talk with the finance on how we want to go about that. But again, with the way we're as budgeted for, what kind of things, kind of look for, I'm like, yeah, that was enough. I don't know. But anyway, so yeah, that was the idea that we passed out.
Thank you. Yeah.
Mayor and council, I am Olivia Ramula, Tiresville State. I just want to let you know, I've worked with Michael a lot on a bunch of upcoming events that, like Chamber of Commerce is going to partnering with and stuff like that. I think that bringing in this different type of event and trying it out, it's always worth to at least try something out at least once and see how it works. And Michael has proven that everything he's done has been very successful. I think this alleviates some of the other dates in April for Parks and Rec to go over and help out with those items. Chambers trying to be involved in those. I got to get confirmation in the next couple of days on that because we're a big group. And so anyways, having somebody else come in and do this will just help us to bring so much more to Riverbank and be able to have Parks and Rec focus on other events in the month of April or whichever the case is, so that they can, so we can just bring more to other people. Not everybody in Riverbank has off Saturdays, but maybe since there's so much going on, let's say in the month of April, that, you know, they can come to one of the events that were happening, that we have going on between the partnerships that Michael is developing with the different aspects of our community and then what Parks and Rec is doing. We have a great Parks and Rec team. I'm so excited because we have so much going on in Riverbank. Starting last year up through this whole entire year, there's a whole calendar that I've picked that. So anyways, I think that bringing this in and trying out would be great. I know that Michael will take care of the security, the residents here. I mean, we have our offices here in town too. And, you know, for a few hours in the day for us to get together after working so hard during Love Riverbank, it's nice to have events like this so we can just kind of go and kick back after cleaning or planting plants or whatever is your project is this year. I know Michael will make sure everything's great, so I think that it's definitely a yes for me. Thank you.
Could we go back to the recommendation? And if there's no further comment, if we have a motion on the recommended or any other?
I make a recommendation, we approve moving from Founder's Day Carnival to partnering with Somar for the youth project.
And I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Michael. Eleven two, direction on the proposed use of the transitional permanent supportive housing funds provided by Senator Egman.
Mayor and council, earlier I presented to you an update regarding the progress of our strategic plan. And so this item is directly related to the strategic plan in offering opportunities to be able to enhance housing for all residents within the city of Riverbank regardless of economic status. Back in twenty twenty-two, so the strategic plan objective to engage the community and nonprofits to develop programs, facilities, transitional housing and/or solutions for homeless services was established in the twenty nineteen strategic plan. Based off of that direction, former council member Barbara Martinez and former mayor O'Brien advocated for their vision to implement these programs to Senator Egman. And so thanks to her advocacy on our behalf, in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, the state of California, um, budget um, allocated two million dollars directly to the city for a transitional housing program. So in July of twenty-one, in an effort to continue that goal of offering services, um, to our unhoused residents, uh, we did purchase, uh, Sierra House. In October of twenty-one, we were awarded a grant, um, from the county uh, in order for, to rehabilitate Sierra House and to be able to construct the day use facility. Uh, we, in council envisioned implementing a second phase of their services to our unhoused residents with a transitional housing project. And that led us to the purchase of the Jackson and Stanislaus property, um, in April of twenty-two. June of twenty-three, we issued a request for proposals for the development of a transitional or permanent supportive housing project. And, uh, based on that proposal, uh, we, uh, started working with Rebuilding Green and Central Valley Community Resources, or CVCR, um, who was selected for the award. Senator Egman's funds were allocated towards that project. In September twenty twenty-four, uh, council voted to instead, uh, reallocate the use of the property on Stanislaus and Jackson uh, in order to make a park, which that district sorely needed, uh, a location for a park. Uh, we did use approximately five hundred thousand dollars of Senator Egman's funds for the construction of Sierra House, leaving an approximate balance of one point five million to be allocated, uh, towards this transitional or permanent support, supportive housing project. And so we have one point five, approximately one point five million dollars available. And because we were not able to proceed with the Stanislaus and Jackson, uh, property and the project that was being contemplated there, uh, we do, I am coming forward to the city council with some options as to where the funding can be reallocated to. Uh, the first option is to continue collaborating with Rebuilding Green and CVCR. Uh, they are currently proposing a project on Morel Road. So this, uh, highlighted property, there's two lots there, um, is on the northwest corner of Oakdale and Morel. That is the MID canal that you see along the bend, uh, towards the top. Uh, they are currently looking to apply for home key funds in order to build a permanent supportive housing project uh, on the, on those two lots. Uh, this is sort of what their proposed schematic looks like, of course, uh, because it is located within the Crossroads West specific plan. There will be some modifications made to it, uh, but this is just a preliminary, um, schematic that they have, uh, provided. And then this is just kind of, um, some additional, um, views, uh, just for you to be able to get a feel of um, how the development, um, would be built. Because of the relationship that the city has built with Rebuilding Green and, uh, CVCR, uh, we are working with them in order to look, uh, to apply for home key plus, um, grant funds in order for them to be able to move forward with this project. Uh, but this would be a key component, uh, to them being able to successfully acquire the land in order to move their project forward. A second option is for the city to independently go out and purchase vacant land, similar to what we did with Stanislaus and Jackson. We would then issue a request for proposal from affordable housing developers for the construction of a transitional permanent supportive housing project. Uh, the third is to issue a notice of funding availability, simply letting interested affordable housing developers know that we have funds available which can be used towards the construction of their transitional or permanent supportive housing projects. So there are a number of projects that have gone through the entitlement process, um, that are looking for funding in order to make their projects affordable. So this would give those projects an opportunity to apply for funding. And the fourth option is for the city to continue to use the funds for the operations of the Sierra House and the day use facility. Uh, currently, we have, uh, annual costs of approximately three hundred and two thousand per year. The funding source will be the general fund as we no longer will have the grant funds available should this, uh, council select one of the other options. And based on that approximate budget, we could fund up to five years of operations. And so the re- recommendation is to provide feedback to staff on the preferred option. Uh, we would like you to reach a consensus today on the option you'd like to move forward uh, and approve that by roll call vote. I will state that for some of the options, uh, although we could split the funds amongst a variety of them, you would have a greater impact if the full amount was availa- made available. Um, especially when we're looking at construction or acquisition of land, uh, for affordable housing projects. And so available for any questions, and then I will leave this option summary up for council to be able to review.
Thank you, um. I'll hold my con for the end, are there any comments or questions right now?
Um, for me, I would prefer that we use this money to continue to operate the Sierra House and day use facility operations, especially since it would be funded by the general fund, which will impact other, uh, monies that will be spent, not be able to be spent from the general fund. Um, one point five million, unfortunately, today doesn't go very far. Um, so I think that that would be, in my opinion, the best choice to do.
Questions or comments?
Um, I'm, I like option one, just because they previously had an option to have space in, uh, the city. My only question would be, would we be able to, um, what's, what side, what sort of people would be in this transitional program? Meaning, there's a lot of children in the area, there's a, a sports complex in the area. So I think that's my biggest concern with that particular piece of land. Um, so that would be, for me, number one, seems like the best option in a way, I mean, four, agreed, just because we get five years of it not coming out of the general fund, but number one, they previously already had commitments for property in the city.
So the program is looking to offer services to, uh, youths that are aging out of the foster care system. That's their primary, um, focus. But with the type of funding that they're looking to apply for through the state of California, uh, they are looking at a component that would include, um, helping individuals, um, that are in need of behavioral health services as well as the potential for assisting veterans. And we do have Deanna Garcia here today, um, representing, um, the proposed project in case you have any additional, uh, questions regarding the specific proposal.
I agree with Vice Mayor Cindy for the Sierra House.
Um, could you, for option three, um, are you referring to project, um, over here on Patterson Road? Um, and which other ones, and, and what kind of impact would it make for where they're at in the process currently?
Uh, so currently, we do have, um, projects that have been entitled at, uh, what we're calling the Lucky House Project. It has already gone through the entitlement process, they will be looking for funding in the future um, in order to be able to proceed with their project, so there's gonna be the opportunity for them uh, to possibly apply for state funding through what's called a supernova that's going to be issued for multifamily housing. Uh, so there's an opportunity there, as well as this would also continue to allow for Rebuilding Green and CVCR to apply as they would like to desire to, to move forward, uh, with their project.
But isn't, um, the monies for transitional housing, and I believe the ones behind, uh, Lucky, the restaurant are, they weren't planning on that being a transitional type of living?
Correct, so as I mentioned earlier, it is for transitional and permanent supportive housing. So the component that we're looking at for these two proposed projects would be permanent supportive, um, so that's, they would qualify for the funding.
Okay, so, and to be clear, I think with any one of these four options, uh, uh, we can't go wrong, right? But it's gonna help one, one, a, a segment of the population. Um, so, in, in my opinion though, um, we did commit, uh, during phase one, we did commit out of the general fund, we purchased the Sierra House, right? We had no funding, we didn't have the, the, the line item from Senator Egman yet. We were fortunate enough to get that, we funded Sierra House using partially, uh, part of that. Uh, and, and that was phase one, right? And so we, and so what I would like to do is, wh- so what's phase two then, right? So we have the, the, the graduates there at Sierra House, say they all graduate, so, so then what's phase two, where do they go? So I think we should use this funding for phase two. Um, I think we should go with option three and kind of open it up for everybody, uh, for these guidelines. And then we commit from the general fund to continue the three hundred and two thousand, uh, to continue, to, to continue Sierra House. Um, that, that's the commitment I, I would like to see, uh, coming out of there. Uh, a tiny home project for transitional housing, uh, to help the graduates for Sierra House. But again, all four options are good, so. Thank you.
Any other council comments or questions, I'm gonna move it to public comment. Any public comment, uh, questions? Yeah, thanks.
Good evening. Um, Darlene and Arlene had a, um.
What did I tell us your name?
Yeah, my name's Deanna Garcia. And, uh, Darlene and Arlene, uh, had a, had a family emergency, so I'll be speaking on behalf of all of us tonight. Um, let's see here, sorry about the delay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Do you represent CVCR?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Please.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff, residents, my name's Deanna Garcia. I'm here as a representative of CVCR. Tonight, we are asking the city of Riverbank to grant us the right to use these funds to move forward with providing supportive permanent housing in the city of Riverbank. For this lot that, and this money that we're, um, asking for tonight, we will be able to, um, in a total bring sixty units, fifty-two two bedrooms and eight one bedrooms and a, uh, resource center. And this will be affordable, safe, responsible housing for our community. And earlier I hea- I heard you ask about the, um, residents that will be living there. Um, there are the, some units that will be set aside for children aging out of foster care. Um, but where our, our heart and soul is, is our couch surfers. Our school district's full of children who are couch surfers. They have no permanent housing. Um, they sleep with, um, in their cars with their parents, with family members, with friends. And it's very hard for a child to get a good education when they don't have, uh, a nice roof over their head, uh, stable, stable residence, to call it their own. And so what we would like to do is, we'd like to purchase these two parcels, um, apply for the home key funding and then put these units up and be able to provide the youth of Riverbank a good start, um, in life. And to be able to provide them a good start in life, we want to have this, um, resource center there where their family will be able to meet with, um, their caseworkers, with their benefit providers, with job training, with education, uh, with English learner, um, translating info- information and education. And just to kind of build on what the city of Riverbank has already built, but to, like, um, um, councilmember Yuribe said that, you know, once they leave this nice house that we've been ever to provide for them to transition off the, you know, off the street and out of their cars, then there will be units available, two bedroom units, one bedroom units, for them to come and be able to have a permanent, um, place until they can, you know, gather up enough skills, enough life skills, a better job to be able to move on to another place and give somebody else an opportunity. But this is a ground, uh, ground ready, shovel ready project that we've been putting together for the last two and a half years here in the city of Riverbank. Worked very closely with, um, a very, you know, great architects and, and civil engineers here, everyone's behind this project and we just ask you to move forward with it, but I know whatever you guys choose, um, it is needed here in the city of Riverbank, so um, I'm sure something great will, will come of Senator Egman's funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mayor, councilmembers. Um, I know that when the park was built, any option or instead of the CVCR um, proposed land that was gonna be used originally was a big hit. Um, I was here that night when that decision was made. And I know that we're, we have a great Sierra House and I get that, that's, that's great for people transitioning to that and whatever we're using that for, the facilities there that they have for, you know, the clothes and all the great stuff that's going on there, and that, that is amazing, but, um, what the CVCR has is gonna be for families and children, and they are homeless right now, living with people as was spoken of earlier. Um, and if this is gonna give opportunity for families to grow in sixty different units, I think that that is the best place for the money to go. Um, Sierra House is not gonna hold sixty families. Um, I think that also with that, uh, we do have this should be a little tiny chunk of that proposed element for housing with their, you know, the need for over three thousand houses here in, in our town. Um, and this'll be a little dent, but it's gonna be a very valuable dent of that, and if it can fit sixty different families there in this land that they're gonna use as best as possible, I think we need to think about putting our money there. Um, we had a commitment that we had at one point in time, um, there were these, that was the plan, is my understanding. Uh, I think that we need to make good on that plan and move forward and give CVCR the opportunity to make good on that original plan that they thought they were going to have fulfill before a park came along. I love parks, don't get me wrong, but I was homeless when I was a child. And, um, sleeping in a car is horrible, I've been there. And I think that kids deserve to have a place to live. And if we can do that and help out sixty families in this project, the sixty is bigger than the one element, and I think that we really need to think about that. We're helping children and children who are transitioning out of this, um, foster care, so, um, please consider that. Um, let's make, fulfill our commitment to CVCR and, um, move forward so they can move forward. Cause right now it's just kind of in limber, so, we're limbo, oh, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? And is there any on Zoom?
Mayor, there is no one on Zoom wishing to speak.
Um, who owns the property again for option one?
So for option one, it's currently under option to purchase, um, by, uh, private property owners, so it is, the hope is that they would be able to use these funds to be able to complete the purchase of the two properties. Um, I will share that regardless of if any of the first three options are selected, uh, the city doesn't simply hand them the money. There's a regulatory agreement that's prepared, that strictly lays out what their maintenance schedules need to be, they have to have, you know, staff onsite, what their security needs to look like, all of that gets regulated by the city to ensure that we have a good development um, that, that is able to, to continue and fit in within the neighborhood, uh, to make sure it's the least impactful. Um, so, the goal with, uh, Rebuilding Green and CVCR is that should they be able to move forward with the project, um, we would be coming forward to the city council at a meeting in February in order to be co-applicants with them on a home key plus application, um, for funding to be able to, to move their project forward.
Well, so on the map there, on for option one, I saw there was two parcels there, are they planning to, what, what's kind of the plan there for the two parcels? Will Sequel be involved or what's, what's kind of going on with that?
So depending on the layout of their development, they do have to comply with the Crossroads West specific plan, but as long as they comply with our tiny home village ordinance, there's architectural and site, uh, plan review that's required and I don't see Josh for me to bug, to see if I got that wrong, but, yeah.
Uh, Maricela had shared with me before, the two parcels, the one on the right is a, is currently has a house that's for sale and the, the one on the left is currently most likely. And the, the one on the left is currently, most likely, uh, something that can be purchased by them. So one is occupied and one is not.
Correct. One is vacant land, so the one that's off to the left is vacant. But they have already had discussions with the property owner there regarding that. And the one in the corner, um, is currently on the market to be sold. So conversations have been had with them as well.
And then, uh, what would the timeline look like for option three for the application process?
Option three, we would have to release the request for, or the notice of funding availability. We would probably open that up for a two-to-three month period as there may be developers who weren't initially intending to, um, initiate a project here. So they may or may not have land to build on. That'll give enough time to be able to look at purchasing land. And then we would receive the proposals, evaluate those. Uh, so probably, I would say, at least a five or six-month period. Same with the option to purchase. We would actually have to go out there and look for the land, go through, um, our purchasing process here with the city, and then be able to issue the request for proposals once again. So that would be another six months to be able to do that. So I would say options number one and options number four would probably be like an immediate use of the funds.
But CBCR could be part of the process at number three, right?
Yes, they could be part of the process on, on number three. Um, but like I mentioned, that puts that, yes. But they would, uh, obviously not be able to perhaps move forward with their grant application that they're planning in February, um, to, for the Home Key Plus.
Could you put up the, the four options again? So it kind of, it kind of sounds like maybe option two is out, so we've gotten that far, right? So I think two is out. Um, so, like, like, uh, council member Fosse said, uh, option three, uh, it offers it to the CBCR as well, so that they're, they wouldn't be out of this. Um, the general fund, uh, would fund Sierra House, so there wouldn't be any concerns with option four, right? So because we're, we're gonna commit to actually funding it, that three hundred and two thousand. And then option three gives us that path to phase two, which has kind of been, um, that next step. So I think for me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stick with option three. Um, so we'll see where the discussion goes.
After discussions and everything, I'm, for one, um, like you said, the Sierra House, we've already budgeted. It's in the general fund, but the work for number one is already started, and I'd hate to see it slow down, um, when there's money available.
And you said the timeline for, um, Home Key is approaching?
Yes, so actually the grant application process, um, the notice of funding availability has already been released. Uh, we've been working on an application that will open probably within the next couple of weeks. And we would be coming forward to the city council with the resolution to support that grant applic, uh, application in order to officially apply. So they are working with a consultant to be able to help them through that application process.
Um, I think my, my, uh, initial thoughts were option three, uh, to, to open up the application for all. But, um, to various points, you know, we've, we've talked to them about postponing their project. Um, and it's time-sensitive right now, so, um, I am looking at option one. But if, is there any more discussion or comments? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we go with option one. Second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Uribe?
Yes.
Council member Pimentel?
Yes.
Council member Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero for option one.
Thank you. Um, all right. So we have, uh, approached the end of the meeting. Comments and reports? City manager over there? Oh, just kidding, sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. Keeping you all on your toes. Okay, eleven-three. Consideration of city council appointments says Sanos Los Homeless Alliance, which is a Shaw Committee and Economic Development Action Committee, EDAC, for the year, for this year, twenty-twenty-five.
Good evening, mayor and council. So tonight, for your consideration, I have the appointments to the, uh, Sanos Los Homeless Alliance Board and the, um, EDAC Committee. The, um, at the regular meeting of January fourteenth, the council considered and approved the appointment list of boards and committees. Um, originally, council member Pimentel volunteered, um, and was appointed to serve on the Shaw. However, due to some conflicting, um, work and time of meeting schedules, he cannot, he can no longer serve as a primary on the board. Um, so we will need to appoint someone new as the primary. Um, and then the E, Economic Development Action Committee, also known as EDAC, was not brought forward for consideration at the January fourteenth meeting, um, due to the fact that this committee has traditionally always been represented by, represented by city staff. Um, but city staff recommends that the city council consider sitting on this committee as the representative. Um, all other eight cities, um, in the county are represented, represented by city council members. So we recommend that, uh, one of you sit on that board. So again, um, the first one that we need to reappoint for is Shaw. Um, if you all remember, they meet the first Wednesday of each month at five-thirty in the, um, basement at the Board of Supervisors Chamber. Um, and council member Pimentel was the primary and the alternate was our city manager.
Okay, so, uh, we need to appoint a primary. So is anyone interested in serving as a primary for the Shaw?
I can do it.
Go. And, uh, Maricela, you'll remain our alternate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we have the Economic Development Action Committee. Um, their two meetings for this year are already scheduled for March fifth and October eighth, from two to five. And they are also held at ten-tenth Street. Um, this one, um, like I said, it's twenty-one members. Um, they are all one representative from each city. They, there's also a member from each, uh, supervisory, um, district. And, um, this is the Economic Development Action Committee that have been, has been in existence since nineteen-sixty-two. And it is there to develop and implement the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy for Stanos Los County and the nine incorporate cities. The committee serves as a liaison between the member jurisdictions and the programs offered by EDAC that promote employment and economic growth. Um, like I said, city staff has traditionally, um, been the representative, um, with our city manager at the primary and our admin analyst as the alternate.
Um, there's no bylaw that states that, or requires that it be an elected official versus a city staff. It just has to be a representative of the city. So certainly it could continue to be, um, city staff who, who attends those meetings. Um, but we wanted to make sure that we gave an opportunity to city council who may be interested in being part of the committee, um, to be able to, to serve on the board.
Just quick clarification, the slide said the recommendation is to present the option, or is the recommendation to have a, a member serve?
Like, like Maricela said, we're presenting the, the option to city council. Um, traditionally, like we said, it's been city staff, but because, um, other cities have council members, uh, representing them, we wanted to offer you the opportunity, if you wish to sit on that committee, to, um, to have that option available to you. So like Maricela said, there is no bylaw, there is no, um, requirement that one of you serve. Um, but we just wanted to present that to you.
Thank you. Is there any interest of serving as a primary?
So I'll make a, I'll make a couple of comments about this one. Um, so seeing as the meetings are gonna be March fifth and October eighth, I'm assuming the entire council is gonna be at the league conference, so we're gonna miss half of these meetings already. Um, I spoke to Joshua, our Economic, uh, Development Director. He's very aware, aware of this committee. We had conversations about, um, the California regional efforts, uh, for economic development. Uh, the Stanos Los twenty-thirty, um, kind of ties into the regional efforts from the state, kind of ties into this. Joshua is excited. I, I asked him straight up, you make the most sense for this committee. It's allowed by the bylaws, so I think we nominate Joshua, since he's totally excited for it, and he already left, so. I think, I think it's him.
That's why he left.
So we can, we can go ahead and, like you could remove myself. Um, I would recommend continuing to leave, um, perhaps Melissa, who, uh, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy is a document that's put together that goes to, um, the federal government in order to be able to apply for federal funds. And so one of the projects that is normally included is the former Army ammunition plant, which needs some significant infrastructure upgrades. So leaving Melissa as an alternate, I think, would be, um, a very good option, should we desire to remove myself, which, trust me, I am okay with that. And, um, including Joshua as the primary.
Do you just need general direction?
Yes, so we're gonna nominate and appoint.
Self, self-nomination. Joshua's excited.
That's what happens when you leave early, so.
He, he'll be voluntold.
We'll keep Melissa as the alternate.
Okay, so I do need a, a motion and a.
So, oh, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I will make a motion to appoint Joshua as the primary and Melissa as the alternate.
It, it's actually for both of the appointments.
And?
And appointing Stacy, oh, sorry, council member Call as.
And appointing council member Call for Shaw.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Uribe?
Yes.
Council member Pimentel?
Yes.
Council member Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five-zero. Thank you.
Item twelve, comments and reports, city manager?
So nothing from me, since Olivia stole my thunder today for city events. So, staff has no, no comments.
Uh, vice mayor?
Thank you. Um, I have a couple. So first of all, I would like to say a big thank you to Development Services for the flashing stop signs on Roselle and South Rosebrook. Yay. Um, my daughter and myself have seen people kind of go through those stop signs because they are kind of hard to see, so thank you very much for getting those up. Um, this past week, Stacy and I attended the New Mayor and Council Member Training Academy held by the League of Cities. It was great to meet other representatives from around the state, actually Northern California, and to be updated on several topics that will affect us as new council members. Um, all of us also attended the Emergency Executive Management Training by OES. I would just like to say that, yes, that sounds very boring, but OES was really good and, and kept us entertained through the meeting, and we got some very useful information. And we're hoping never to have to use it because it's emergency. So, please, no emergencies. Um, and a reminder that the Riverbank Historical Society Meeting and Installation Dinner is February eighth at six PM at Percos. I hope to see everybody there. And then finally, I would like to bring an agenda item to the next council meeting about an alternative to the Riverbank Regional Recycle Water Project and its over ninety-million-dollar cost. The city of Modesto has a tertiary plant that is part of the North Valley Regional Recycle Water Project. The city of Riverbank could become part of this project by transferring our wastewater through a pipeline that would be constructed. The cost of this project potentially, would potentially be a lot less than the cost of the recycled water project here in Riverbank. I also would like to note that this would make us part of a regionalization, whereas the project presented now, uh, is not. Since these costs will be paid by our citizens, and there are basically little grants and lots of loans, um, that are available that would need to be payback, I believe that it is in the best interest of the city and for our citizens that we do a cost feasibility study to compare what it would be like to join the city of Modesto. I am answer, asking my college, my college, my council colleagues to comment tonight by requesting that the city manager contact the city of Modesto and forward an agenda item for approval to do a cost feasibility study so that we can review this alternative to the Riverbank Regional Recycle Water Project. Thank you.
You, um, you will go this way, so council member Pimentel.
Like to thank you all for sitting through a long meeting. I'll keep mine short. Like Olivia said, uh, February eighth and twelfth, Red Robin has partnered with Love Riverbank. So if you go and eat, you'll be given to Love Riverbank. And it's nice to see a full room. Let's keep encouraging people to come. Thank you.
So as council member or vice mayor Fosse said, uh, her and I both attended the New Mayor's and Council Member Academy hosted by CalCities, whose goal is to protect local decision-making and leaving it, uh, decisions to the cities themselves. Um, I was able to learn about effective advocacy, financial responsibility, civic engagement, and land use planning, which was a big one for me. Um, and the biggest takeaway that I had is that people are passionate about where they live, so we need to be an advocate for our community. Um, and then now through February twenty-eighth, Stanos Los Latino Chamber has, um, scholarship applications available. They're gonna be awarding ten five-hundred-dollar scholarships for local seniors, um, current college students or trade students. I'll be posting it to my Instagram and Facebook. So if you want more information, if you have a high school senior or somebody in junior college or, uh, college, I, or trade school, I encourage you to check that out. Um, five-hundred dollars, a couple books. And then, uh, there is a multi-chamber mixer with city of Riverbank and, uh, well, Riverbank Chamber of Commerce, sorry, and Stanos Los Latino Chamber of Commerce on February sixth at the Stonegate Community Center in Patterson.
Thank you. Uh, and Olivia also stole my thunder, so shout out to Olivia. No, just kidding. Uh, what's that? We're just giving you a hard time. Uh, so, no, I would also like to encourage, uh, everybody to attend the, uh, the mixer, the ribbon-cutting event for, uh, LGI Homes Diamond Bar East. Um, I post, I, I'm personally inviting all of the council. I, I printed out the flyers, set them on your desk. And for the audience as well, um, there's copies right underneath the agenda, so if you guys can grab one on your way out. Um, it's family event, so bring the kids as well, too. So it's gonna be from six o'clock to eight PM. All the info's in the back. If you have questions, reach out to me. Thank you.
Um, so tomorrow is Lunar New Year, and, uh, I am wearing a traditional Vietnamese, um, outfit and have left, I didn't have enough, but I'd left some red envelopes, um, for you all. And it's, uh, to symbolize good fortune in the new year. Um, I attended the United States National Conference for Mayors in DC, um, and returned the day before inauguration. And, um, it was enlightening to be able to connect with mayors from across the nation and to hear what, um, at the end of the day, honestly, what we're all, uh, dealing with is similar issues. And so the whole theme of it was, um, how we can prepare for the new incoming federal administration. And housing was huge for everybody across the nation. Um, and so, uh, I have built some partnerships and hopefully looking forward to bringing some positive ideas that we can adopt to, uh, the city. Now, um, with going back to the regional water recycling plant, um, the, the original price tag was ninety million, and we were presented with a hundred and twenty-four million at this point. Um, I think it is difficult to depend on FEMA with the federal grants. Um, so I would like to also second the option to at least bring to council the ability to, uh, talk about, uh, cost feasibility study. Um, and there is the option for other council colleagues to send an email if you're interested in learning more about that. Um, again, just to have it as an agenda item to discuss. But that's it for me. Um, there are no closed session items. And the next regular city council meeting will be on Tuesday, February eleventh. This meeting is now adjourned.